Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan will lead us in the invocation and a moment of public silence.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And if you would remain standing, we have several people here for a moment of silence. The first one is Christine Eisner, who passed away at the age of seventy-two on Sunday, December twenty-ninth. Born in Newport, Rhode Island. She had been, prior to her retirement, had worked at Morton Hospital for thirty years. She was known as Miss Chris at the Elizabeth Paul School in Taunton, where she worked as a lunch recess assistant and made many friends throughout the years. She had many enjoyments in life. Her greatest one was spending time with her family, traveling to Foxwoods Cape Cod or going to Hawaii with her sister. She is survived by her daughter Jennifer Smith, her son John Coelho. She was also the mother of her favorite fur baby Hope. She had several brothers and sisters and was the proud grandmother of Molly Ewitt, Connor Smith, Zachary Smith, Austin Coelho, Madison Coelho, and was the great-grandmother of Hoppa Ewitt. She also leaves behind her special friend Rick White, along with many nieces and nephews. Please keep this family in your thoughts and prayers. Next one is Donna Stroney, who passed away on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Donna was a devoted wife, mother, and grandmother. Passed, passed away on December thirty-first, as I said. She was sixty-five years old, born in Norwood. She was one of six children. She was the beloved wife of Bill Stroney, who worked for the TMLP for many years and is also a TMLP commissioner, with whom she shared thirty-six years of marriage and had three, uh, three children, Jessie, Christine, and Jason, who were the light of her life. She found immense joy in her role as being Mimi to her cherished grandchildren, Lucas and Teddy, and was awaiting the birth of a granddaughter, expected to be born in July, who, who, as the family said, though they won't cross paths in this world. She already adored the baby granddaughter she's expecting. She will be remembered for her warm smile, generous spirit, the unconditional love she extended to everyone around her. She worked in the, the business department of Taunton High School, of the Taunton School Department at the old Taunton High School, at fifty William Street, in the old superintendent's office. She also worked as a secretary for my husband. She was just a lovely woman who I truly enjoyed. And her wake was this evening. Please keep this family in your prayers. Next one is Ronald J. Medaris. Ronald J. Medaris, a lifelong resident of Taunton, passed away peacefully on Wednesday, January first, at Morton Hospital. He was the beloved husband of the late Audrey J. Perry Medaris, whom he shared fifty-eight years of marriage before her passing. Born in Taunton, he was, um, did a lot of things. He graduated from Taunton High, worked at ICI Americas for over thirty years as a lab tech, and was also the chief steward of the union until retiring when the Dyson Plant closed. He pursued a culinary arts degree from Massachusetts, Massasoit Community College, and went on to work at various restaurants on Cape Cod, Massasoit Community College, et cetera, and restaurants on the Cape, including the Massachusetts Maritime Training Ship, where he cooked while cruising to Puerto Rico, the U.S. Virgin Islands, and all these other places. He worked as a barber. He tended bar at the Circle Cafe, drove a cab, and was a custodian for the Taunton school system. So he really did a lot of things. He also drove a seventy bus for Al Tucan, as well as Bloom Bus, until his wife made him retire for good. He was very active in the community, a man of faith. And he had one daughter, Carrie St. Lauren, and, um, who was also a secretary to my husband. Started with him when she was eighteen and worked for him for over forty years. That was his daughter. And she had two grandsons, Ian and Josh. His great, his granddaughter passed away earlier on. She had cystic fibrosis. Uh, that was Carrie's daughter Jenna. And he also has a great-grandson. Uh, please keep, keep this family in your prayers also. Next one, Patricia Simmons, passed away on Thursday, January second, twenty-twenty-five, at Morton Hospital, surrounded by family. Patricia was a graduate of Catholic Central High School and was a teaching assistant for Taunton Public Schools for thirteen years, a parishioner of St. Andrew the Apostle Parish, a member of the Sons of Italy and Winding Book Village. She enjoyed watching the Lifetime Channel and crime shows, and she looked forward to going out to lunch into the pool with her friends. Uh, she had a love for shopping, which everybody knew, and had a huge heart and was loved by everyone. And many of you probably know her husband, Richard Dick Simmons. And they had two sons, Jeffrey and Richard B. And she also had two grand, two grandchildren. Uh, please keep that family in your prayers. Next one, Fernanda DeBrum. Fernanda DeBrum of East Taunton passed away peacefully on January second after a courageous battle with cancer. She was the loving wife for the late Francisco DeBrum. They wed in Portugal and were married for sixty-seven years. She was ninety-eight years old. Uh, she was, uh, born in the Azores at San Miguel, and she resided in East Taun for the past sixty-nine years. Prior to her retiring, she worked for the city of Taunton Public Schools. As, and she was retired cafeteria helper when she retired in twenty-ten. She was a caretaker for many years. She is survived by three children, three grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. Please keep this family in your thoughts and prayers. Also, um, we just received word that Paul Ferris, a firefighter in the city of Taunton, passed away on Monday, January sixth. Paul was seventy-five years old. Um, Paul's wife, Maureen Ferris, was a longtime educational assistant at the Morton School, and he leaves two sons, Eric and Brian, as well as his wife and grandchildren. Please keep that family in your thought and prayers. And one more person, Teresa Enos, who was, who passed away yesterday. Um, she was a former employee of the Taunton Public Schools. She worked as, in the secretaries and assistants unit, and she was married to Dick Enos, who, um, worked for the TMLP. So, someone else associated with the school. So for all these people in this difficult time of year, please keep them in your prayer. And I'll ask one other thing. I know you've been watching the news. We need to keep in our prayers the people in California. They're going through something really horrific and a lot of sadness out there. So have a moment of silence for all those things, people. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Great job, Mrs. Fagan.
Now I got one more thing. Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Oh, God. Mrs. Shawes.
Present.
Mr. Polowski.
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present. Um, Melissa Santos is absent. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
Dr. DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of December eighteenth.
Small move. Second.
Motion and second. If there's no discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. And we have Isaiah Wendell with us this evening for the student advisory committee report.
Thank you. As Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am part of the Taunton High School Student Advisory Committee. Here's a brief update on what's happening at our school as we kick off the new year, twenty-twenty-five. First, DECA districts are happening tomorrow and Friday in Hyannis. We are, we have about a hundred and forty-five students attending, which is the most ever from Taunton High School. It is exciting to see so many interested students in the program this year. Also, we have senior stipulative award night coming up on January twenty-first. It is always fun to recognize the unique personalities and achievements of our seniors. Perfect attendance awards were recently handed out to students who maintained one hundred percent attendance for the beginning of this school year, which is a great accomplishment for all those students. For our dual enrollment students, we will be giving out sweatshirts soon. Students will get to choose between a full zip or quarter zip style, which is a nice way to recognize their participation in the program. As we approach the end of this semester, a reminder that finals and midterms are scheduled for Thursday, January sixteenth, and Friday, January seventeenth. Both of these days will be half-days for students, and Friday, the seventeenth, will mark the last day of this semester. Now for athletics. Our hockey team is off to a strong start with a four-one, five-one record. The boys JV basketball team is also performing well this season. Additionally, there's a swim meet happening tonight against Franklin. We wish those, that team, the best. And the boys basketball team will be playing this Friday against, I'm not sure who. Lastly, the National Honor Society induction ceremony is set for January thirtieth. It is a special event, and we encourage everyone to attend to support these students. That wraps up my update. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Thank you, Isaiah, for that update. All right, is there any?
Can we receive and place that on file?
I would second that if we need to do so.
Don't believe we do?
Motion to accept. You made a presentation.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Appreciate it all.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. All right. Is there any public input this evening? Okay, thank you. And next we go to E. Bar Foundation and Early College Update. Superintendent Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. So as Dr. Harrison and his team prepare for their presentation, I'm really excited, super excited. I think you've heard me speak very highly regarding bar. And I know there's always been questions regarding the amount of time that staff and administrators spend out of the building. But I think after hearing and seeing tonight's presentation, you'll see that the work and what we're learning as we visit school, high, highly effective and high-performing school systems with like demographics to us in Taunton, and the work that we're bringing back is really having an impact. Large, small, is having an impact. And I, I look at the people in the audience tonight that are joining us, and I think of them as spark plugs. It's not often that you have spark plugs that really ignite and empower education in our schools. So I'm very excited to, to have them share the work that I care and value deeply and the work that I've been blessed to participate in. So without further ado, Dr. Harrison, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you, the school committee, for having us here tonight.
Start over. Thank you very much, Superintendent Cabral, and thank you to the school committee for having us here this evening. Uh, we're very proud of the work we're doing, and we wouldn't be able to do it without the support of this group, the school committee, as well as the, the whole leadership team at Central Office. Uh, you're gonna hear three key themes tonight when we talk about our school improvement and the great work that's been going on. The first theme you're gonna hear is leadership growth. You're gonna hear about a culture of belonging, which is the second point. And then you'll hear, thirdly, the student voice will be the third theme. So you'll hear about these three themes and all the great work that's been going on in the building. And I'm extremely proud of our staff. Um, the teachers have been working extremely hard all year, the support staff. Um, it is a team, and I think you're gonna see that tonight. So without further ado, actually, before I do that, uh, the one that deserves the most credit is Assistant Principal Carolyn Blino. She's been in this project start to finish. She's the point person. Uh, they call her the catalyst, um, when we go to the, the meetings on Zoom, um, because she really is doing the coordinating, uh, and the leading through this work. So Carolyn's doing a fantastic job, and Ms. Blino, I'll introduce you to kick it off.
Good evening. Um, I just wanna begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to our district leadership and Dr. John Harrison for their unwavering, unwavering support and for giving me the opportunity to serve as the catalyst, leading our bar initiatives, and as the leader of our instructional leadership team. Thank you for your trust. Our high school is incredibly fortunate to have been awarded the Bar Foundation's Meeting the Moment Grant last year. For those who may not be familiar, the Bar Foundation is a philanthropic group deeply committed to school transformation and equity. Their mission aligns closely with our goals, to ensure every student is known, challenged, and supported, and fully prepared to meet the demands of college and career. Our year-one work focused on building school capacity and visioning. And through Bar's professional development opportunities, we visited high-performing schools, both near and far, reflecting on our practices that we could inspire and reshape our vision. A significant part of this past year was dedicated to drafting a follow-up grant proposal, outlining strategic actions made for school improvement. Today, I'm excited to share the progress we've made this year through our collaborative efforts to advance these transformational moves. We are fully committed to continuous growth, and we are proud to share, oops, sorry. Apologize. Our focus this year is centered on the key three priorities that Dr. Harrison just mentioned. First, we are equipping building leaders with targeted professional development to strengthen our instructional practices. Second, we are fostering that culture of belonging, and we are ensuring that we have a culture of community and inclusion, particularly our vision, our new vision, I'm gonna read it out loud. Taunton High School believes that all of our students can excel through rigorous learning, a sense of belonging, empowered voice, and curiosity. Together with families and the community, we are preparing students for college career in a global society. Lastly, we are engaging with current students and alumni to adapt the high school experience to ensure that we are preparing them for life after graduation. These priorities are our key transformational efforts. We are fully committed to continuous growth and are proud to share that our instructional leaders are receiving executive coaching and mentoring with advanced professional development through Boston College's Lynch Leadership Academy. Additionally, teachers, leaders, and district members are participating in regional consultancies focused on change management and addressing, and addressing key problems of practice. I am also formally receiving comprehensive executive coaching through my Spring Point Transformative Leadership Fellowship, which emphasizes promoting student voice and agency. At this time, I'm gonna introduce Peter Gillen, our social studies curriculum supervisor, who will share how we're building leadership capacity through our strong partnership with Lynch. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm just here to sort of relate to you how transformative it's been wonderful and it has been to have a coach. Uh, I've been in the building for over twenty years and in my role for over ten. Uh, the meetings I have run with the help of my coach have been the best ones I've ever, I've ever been able to put together, and I'm so grateful for her. I'm grateful for, to be able to be ten years into my job as administrator and to hit the reset button, to realize that I have so much to learn. I see so much more clearly when I work with Jenny. And, um, we wanted to talk about, um, not just how she's helped us, but our whole school. So you'll hear probably later about how, working with Jenny, all of the departments came together to work on comment planning for, um, department meetings. And if you know anything about the history of the high school, those were always individual silos, doing our own depart, uh, our own meetings. And that was cool for the time. But I'll tell you, it's been absolutely wonderful to work with my colleagues, put together a similar, um, uh, department meeting, come back and discuss it, and then debrief it with our coach. It's been absolutely marvelous. I only regret that, two things. The first is that, uh, I had ten years without the help of my coach. And second, that she, despite my asking, won't become my life coach. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. When reflecting on our culture of belonging, I am most proud of the transformation of our instructional leadership team, which includes both teachers and instructional administration. This committed group has been instrumental in driving our school improvement efforts, ensuring consistency in classroom expectations across all subjects through the creation of our instructional playbook, essentially a set of best practices. In addition, we have worked as an entire school to unpack our instructional vision, ensuring that it is not only understood, but actively lived out loud in classrooms. A recent trip to Kentucky has also provided inspiration for a staff-led passion project, fostering more positivity here at Taunton High School, helping to strengthen teachers' sense of belonging, something that can be really challenging in a very large school. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sarah Gibson, our culinary teacher, our Skills USA advisor, and our National Honor Society advisor, and Allison Goldar, our college and career and early college counselor, who will share more about our efforts and the impact we've seen so far with their passion project.
Thank you. Good evening. Can I go to the slide here? Okay, so one of the, um, things that we saw in Kentucky at various schools, I think, was a sense of belonging from staff, staff engagement, staff participation. I would say some of the schools, almost a hundred percent. And I think it sparked some conversations within the group that went to Kentucky and the ILT about how can we make that work for Taunton High School? And, um, you know, one of us had an idea, it wasn't myself, but someone had an idea. Dave had an idea, um, that was actually modeled after Bridgewater State University's athletic program, something they do, and we transformed it and sort of, um, made it work for Taunton High School. We call it the Tiger Cup. It's a little staff competition about participation in Spirit Weeks and different events. It's a, it's a year-long process and, or competition. And we have our own Instagram, and it's, I think, you know, we've had a hundred and eighty-one total participants. We had twenty-one December events. Uh, we had eighty-two people in our staff attend five events or more. And we've heard a lot of positive feedback about the sense of belonging it's brought to Taunton High School, and just almost put a new facelift on faculty engagement, perhaps. And someone said it was the first, our December event was the first event they've attended in ten years. So that was nice to hear. Thank you.
Just to echo what Sarah was saying, we, when we came back from Kentucky, what we saw there, teachers wanted to be at their school, which then made their kids want to be at their school. And we were, we came back with this sense of, of pride and said, you know what? We want other people to, to love Taunton High School as much as we do, and we want the kids to love it. What can we do to be, to, that's fun, and actually make people wanna come to work and, and love being in their classroom? So it, it's a silly little competition, but people are taking it very seriously. Um, our, our parking space was just put up this week, so the individual winner every month gets a reserved parking spot. It's funny what you can buy off Google. I just got that. Um, but other events, um, we even have some outside events, which is amazing. We're really just like starting to become a group of people that wanna hang out with each other, not just in, say, the math department or the history department. So we're just really proud of what we're doing. And if anyone ever wants any more information for other schools, we're happy to share it. Um, 'cause I think you can model it at elementary and middle school level. It's really just about making people feel like they belong. And they can have my corny emails that I send out regularly, too. Thanks.
And if I can just add, uh, the events mainly consist of student events. So really, the staff are supporting the basketball game, the hockey games, the events that we're holding. And so more staff are intending the things that are supporting our students. And so this has been such an amazing transformation at our school. Probably my favorite part of our school improvement efforts has been enhancing student voice. Research shows that when students feel heard and empowered, their engagement and academic success improves. By honoring student voice, identity, and collaboration in the classroom, we create an inclusive, motivating environment where students can thrive. We're not only conducting student empathy interviews to better understand their experience, but we're also committed to involving students in co-designing our improvement efforts. Students are crucial to this process, and we recognize the importance of making space for their insights. Most recently, our Alumni Summit and the upcoming High School Summit will provide opportunities for students to share their perspective and contribute directly to shaping our work. At this time, I'm gonna call up three teachers. Math teacher and student council advisor Caitlin Dermody, world language and key club advisor Herbert Leonard, and ninth-grade early college English teacher Megan LeBlanc, who are gonna share a bit of experience with the Alumni Summit.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. Uh, we're here to talk about the Alumni Summit, which happened last Monday, January sixth, at the Chateau. We had about forty-six students and twenty-eight staff members attend. The goal of this was to have our recent alumni come back to share their journey, uh, both at Taunton High School and their post-secondary journey, and provide feedback to us on this. Students rotated through eight different stations where we discussed different topics such as post-secondary readiness, course grading in college, and advice for our current Tigers. Our next steps on the ILT include taking all of the data, both all the notes that we took at the stations, as well as the exit surveys that we provided, and analyzing and interpreting that data, and using those findings to create a game plan of how to modify our current practices so that we can better meet the needs of all our students as we move forward.
Hi. Um, I recently started working at Taunton High School. I've only been there for about a, two and a half years. And for me, I really enjoyed being able to see more recent alumni who I didn't get to know, teaching ninth grade primarily. My kids haven't graduated yet. And seeing what amazing opportunities they had from Taunton High School and the places that they've gone since leaving in the past three, four years. And they were really excited to come back and share all that with us. And, um, I think it's just really important to see that from students who didn't graduate too long ago. These are kids who are still in college or who are still applying to colleges actively, and the passion they have for coming back to Taunton High and making the school better for future students who are coming in. It's just really great, and it's lovely to see. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Um, so I will just echo everything that's been said. Um, it was such an empowering evening. Um, Superintendent Cabral also made appearance, too, so he knows. Um, it was just, the energy in the room was amazing. Um, our alumni, they were so excited to be back, so excited to see us. Uh, it was so exciting to see them catch up and just hear them and hear their experiences, where they're at now, and be able to take their feedback and be able to think, okay, how can we use what they're saying and just make Taunton High School the best place it could be? Thank you.
Thank you, Herbert, Caitlin, and Megan. Next, I'd like to introduce Allison Goldar to share about early college, the early college program. As the early college and career counselor, Ally Goldar is an important part of our commitment to expanding access to higher education and supporting students in their post-secondary pursuits and career goals. She is amazing.
Thank you. So I know I was here last year, and I kinda gave an overview of when we were starting this early college program and where we were going. So I'm just gonna give a brief update to where we're at, because I'm super proud, and I think you're gonna see why. Um, so first and foremost, thank you again to everyone sitting here, but most importantly, to my administration. They're beyond supportive of this program. Um, and once you see some of the stats, I think you'll, like I said, be so proud as well. So what, what is early college? I know I already gave an overview, but again, this is our program at the high school. We are one of fifty-nine, that's it, fifty-nine high schools in Massachusetts that has this early college designation. So we get grant money to provide free college classes during the school day. Um, we try to- We try to also make sure our students who are taking these courses feel supported and that they have the ability to take it with the wraparound supports. The early college design principles are through the Department of Ed. It's part of your packet, but I'm not going to go over it for you now. This year is our second year doing early college. As I mentioned, the tuition fees and books are all free to our students. It happens during the day, and they earn credit. We now offer three legitimate pathways. So either a student can enter our pre-med pathway with UMass Dartmouth, they can enter our education pathway with Bridgewater State, or they can enter our liberal arts pathway with BCC. The point of doing these pathways is really to see what the student is interested in and then make sure that we're providing them with the correct courses to then help them in their future. All, like I said, they're all offered during the day, and there's a co-teacher, a THS high school teacher, that's assigned with them. I think one of the big pieces that's recently, last month, our early college teachers went to AVID training, thanks to BAR, which was a seminar where they got to learn about a new curriculum for college and career readiness. And because we had seven professors this semester, and we had five early college teachers, we wanted them to make sure they were doing similar curriculum when the professor wasn't lecturing. So by sending them to this AVID training, they all now have a certain curriculum they're following. They're able to talk about time management, goal setting, college searches. So they're making sure kids are all getting the same message in early college and then making sure they feel ready to take on the next step. Additionally, we had just posted for early college tutors, so we're hoping to hire a couple tutors to be in the classroom with us as well, to offer some extra support. Because we don't want students to feel like this is a high school course, because it's not. They're enrolling as students. They apply to the university, they get accepted as a student, and the rigor of these courses are the same as if they were sitting on a campus. So we don't, we're not naive that these are high school students taking a college course. So we really work very hard, me, the co-teachers, administration, to make sure our kids feel supported and have additional supports. As Isaiah said earlier, we are just, we just launched, because we had such a successful fall semester, which you'll see the stats in a minute, we're doing inaugural early college jackets for all the kids, and they are beyond excited. And also in hopes then they're going to walk around the halls, and kids will start seeing this, too, and it's really starting to build this community within our walls. Because it's cool to be in early college. So most currently, this fall, we had 175 students partake in early college. All of them passed, yay. So I just got the grades, so that was amazing. Into the spring, they will also, all 175 of them will take another college course. So just that alone, there'll be over 350 college, will exceed 350, and then, so that's an impressive 1,050 college credits earned this school year from Taunton High School, which I think is amazing. This year, I just put what the courses we're offering. So we have an Intro to Arts and Sciences, a Human Ecology course, a Social Problems course, Human Nutrition, Child Study and Early Ed in Elementary, Introduction to Anthropology, Elementary Spanish I and II, Public Speaking course, and an Intro to Sociology course. So these courses are not easy, but they are mass transferable. So whether that student is going to go to UMass Dartmouth and take these courses with them, they will transfer there. Or if they're looking at another college, we're hopeful, and that's part of the program, is we're giving them these skills ahead of time, these credits, and then they're able to take it with them to whichever college they decide to go to. And then as for future projections, which I know people like, some people like math and numbers, next year, we're on target to have 370 students in early college, followed by 500 the following year, and then hopefully reaching that 650 student mark by the 27, 28 school year, which is about 23% of our population at the high school. So we're aware of how large these numbers are and how fast this is moving. But I think if you were to pull aside, hopefully when you see them in their jackets in the community, if you were to pull aside an early college kid and ask them about their experience, how is it going? Do you like it? They would only have positive feedback. And I don't mean just Isaiah sitting over there. I think they would all have positive feedback, and I really truly believe in the work. And the kids feel confident, they can go on college campuses, as you can see in the photo, and they have a better sense of who they are by taking the college course. They know where their weaknesses are, they see where their strengths are. And they might be like, you know what, I was in this pre-med pathway, and I don't think I exactly want to go and be a doctor, but I think I like this health science route. So I really think it's allowing kids to explore, but like hands-on explore, and really understand who they are. Clearly, I'm passionate about it. So I'm happy to answer any questions about it, too, but I believe it's the new way of the world, and I'm very fortunate to be in my position. Thank you.
As we conclude, we want to sincerely thank you. We are proud of the transformation unfolding at Taunton High School through our collective efforts, including the growth of our instructional leadership, the cultivation of a stronger sense of belonging, and the amplification of student voice. To wrap up, we'd like to share a video that highlights the achievements and experiences of our students, showcasing the positive impact of these changes and the commitment that's driving our school progress. Thank you.
My name is Condoleezza, and I'm currently a senior at Taunton High School.
Hi, I'm Zachary K. I'm a senior at Taunton High School.
I'm Latice Yolo. I have never felt more like a Tiger in my life before my senior year. My first impressions of Taunton High specifically were definitely positive. I remember the club fair, the Tiger Pride Night, where all the different posters for the clubs and sports were going on, and it just made me feel more connected, knowing that all these, like, upperclassmen were trying to welcome the A-Braters.
I think there's a lot of opportunities with the classes here. There's so many AP classes and dual enrollment classes that I've heard that other schools don't offer all of them. But Taunton High offers so many that I get to get like a head start in college.
I was born in Hesepi, Brazil, and I moved here when I was 13 years old. I remember being that ESO class at the beginning of the day with my A block. I just felt better because I got to be with people that were just like me and had to go through the same things as me, and were just moving to this country, and we're learning English together. I had amazing teachers. They saw my potential and still see it and support me through everything that I go through.
Definitely one of my favorite classes that I've taken is band class and band program. We got to help mentor middle schoolers, so it's kind of nice seeing how the high schoolers look back at the younger grades and help bring them up to the level where they are now.
The whole experience of Mr. THS and the whole, like, production of the show, it was, you know, one of my favorite experiences from high school. We would all get together once or twice a week to plan the entire show. And it was just very cool to see it all come together at the end.
I just had the dream to become an architect, and I moved here, and then CAD. CAD is basically the way that you draft plans and the way you draw houses. By the time I graduate, I'll have 900 hours and a certificate. It was definitely like a really big accomplishment.
Now I'm going to Harvard in the fall. If I didn't have that foundation from Taunton High, I don't think I would have made it to where I am now. So definitely, thank you, Taunton High.
Yeah, so I'm going to UMass Dartmouth to study biomedical engineering. I am one of this year's Founder Scholarship recipients, which is a full ride. There's an essay that I had to write for it. All the support with English teachers was really key to, like, being able to actually write that essay.
I have a great support system here. I'm just so sad to be graduating and leaving this place.
And that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you. That was an excellent video, an excellent presentation, very inspiring. So I will open it right up to the committee if there are any comments or questions. And if not, I will pass it right over to-
One second.
Oh, sure.
I was waiting for you, Donna.
Thanks.
Mr. Schaus.
I have a quick question for Ally. So Ally, the courses that they're taking, is it just, it's just high school kids in the course, but the professor is a college professor?
Exactly. So they are, our current Taunton High School students apply, they get accepted, say, at UMass Dartmouth. So they're also a UMass Dartmouth student, but the courses are, only are Taunton High kids. So the professors come in two days a week and lecture in the classroom for our kids. In person.
Oh, okay.
So all, this past semester, all seven professors came into the building twice a week. And then on the off days, our co-teacher, our Taunton High School teacher, reiterates, makes sure they're understanding the assignments, goes through the grade book, and then also does some of that time management, goal setting, you know, college and career readiness piece.
Have you gotten feedback from those professors and what they, what they think?
Yeah, so we have one that's already, so we've had a couple repeaters. So last year, we had one come back this year, and then one from the fall is teaching another section for us in the spring, because they like, they love us. But they love coming into the high school, the kids are motivated. They, they're listening, they're doing their work. Last year, just, I don't think I said it, but 85% of the students last year received a B or higher in their college course, which was like an unbelievable statistic. The grades from the fall came out, and they're equally as awesome. I just didn't want to give you a data point until the end of the year.
Thank you. That's outstanding. Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Laura, and then Mr. Pulaski.
Thank you. That was a question I had, same question I had about, a lot of the people in the community ask, how does that work? So by you explaining that. Now, just a few more, now you're saying 175 this year.
Yep.
You're anticipating double that next year.
We are, yes.
So again, is it through an assessment of who qualifies to attend this program?
So we do, we're going to probably fall back on a lottery system in the long run because we want to make sure it is equitable to all students. So right now, our pre-med and our education pathway were geared more towards juniors and seniors. So they had to do an application process with me. We went through a whole piece with that to make sure they were the right fit. They have to meet a certain GPA as well in order to be able to take the college credit, the college course. And our younger, our BCC liberal arts pathway is actually, they're freshmen. So they started with us in elementary Spanish, and they'll take Spanish II in the spring. But some of those, they also had to go through an application process, making sure they understand what it is, their parents know. But as we continue to expand, I, Carol and I have been talking about, we're probably going to have to go to a lottery system because it is starting to become very desirable, which is what you want. But we want to make sure it is equitable for all students. And I don't know if I mentioned it this time, but we obviously focus, it's grant-funded through the state. So the focus is for marginalized populations. So our students of color, our low-income students, our first-generation students. So those are big factors that we do look at when we're, when we're trying to target who should be doing the program. So that's a big piece of it.
And so does this, some of this instruction also includes summer months?
It does not, nope. So it's just fall and spring semester.
So they're taking, say, a minimum of four courses during the day?
Yep.
And they, they choose to take additional?
So Taunton High has a six-block schedule, now a six-period schedule.
Which may include four subjects.
Yep, and so we run early college, because of professor schedules, we run our early college courses B through F period, so from 8:30 to 2 o'clock on the hour. So they, they take it during the day. So as one of their six courses, they would take an early college course, and it's on their transcript. They get AP credit for taking the course as well, GPA weight. So it's one of their courses that they would take, maybe instead of like an elective in like the history department or one of our other departments.
Well, thank you for your presentation. One of the things that really got to me was when it said enhancing student voice, engagement, participation, getting students to come back and talk about the experiences, collaborate with ongoing learning. It's like students that go above and beyond to higher education, come back and talk about the experiences and what they've learned and what they went through, enhances that, you know, junior or senior to what they may be looking forward to. So I think that's tremendous.
Yeah, that was a big piece of, we really were excited about the Alumni Summit, so that, we had a good experience with that this week. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pulaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Guys, thank you so much for that great presentation. Contagious positivity, I really love to see it. And I just wanted to give you a little feedback. My son, Jack, attended the Alumni Event. He came home, he was so excited to talk about it. He thought it was awesome. He said he just felt such great energy from everybody there, like, everybody was so happy to come back to Taunton High School, share their experiences. So like, you guys are doing an awesome job, and just thank you so much.
I'll call on Isaiah and then Dr. DeMello. Isaiah Wendell, our student representative, would like to make some comments.
Well, first, great presentation, all of you. I'd like to begin by thanking and commending all of the staff, co-teachers, professors, everybody who puts the work into this program to really make it work. I'd like to give a special thanks to Mrs. Golda. She works so very hard. Her office is right in the College and Career Center. We're sitting there on our days that the professor's not teaching, and I always love to pop into Mrs. Golda's office, ask her questions about this, pick her brain about that. And it's really, I know other students do, too. And I, it's a really great thing that we have going at the high school. And I appreciate the support of all the administrators, both within the building, central office team, and all the people who work so very hard to put this together. So thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mayor. Always a tough act to follow Mr. Window, but I'm doing my best. Early on in the presentation, we talked about the BAR Foundation and the visiting schools in Kentucky, faculty engagement, how these schools align with our vision, our mission. But we talked about building leadership capacity. Can someone define or expand upon building leadership capacity? Are we talking about students or faculty?
We're talking about faculty. So leadership capacity in the area of Lynch Leadership Academy. When we talked about the Boston College Lynch Leadership Academy, that's an example of building that leadership capacity. When we talk about student leadership, that wasn't really part of this conversation, but it's a great point because student leadership growth is also an area that I think in the future, we'd love to expand even more on. So I like the question.
So as a follow-up, I've been mayor. As a follow-up, so the leadership capacity of faculty, staff person, are we looking for them to go into department chairs, into principalships? I mean, I'm just saying, there's just a limited capacity of what we can offer. And again, you know, teaching and growing our own, and then them leaving, because we don't have an opportunity for them, is a shame. So I'm just, I'm just a little confused how the progression would be for a faculty member. What are they looking for? What is their leadership capacity? What is their goal?
The leadership growth is referring to the curriculum supervisors. So when Mr. Gillen spoke, he spoke about how the Lynch Leadership Academy provided him an opportunity to improve in his craft as a leader with personalized coaching, which is something our administrative team, our curriculum supervisors, really haven't had. The art curriculum supervisor, Ms. Antrim, told me the other day, this is the best professional development she's had in her 10 years in her, in her time because she hasn't, you know, she was forced to really think differently, and she's been provided that personalized coaching, which we've never really had. So it's really talking about our current administrators, not so much our teachers becoming administrators.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you all for the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Sorry, if I could just expand on that, too, about the teacher part, because I'm really excited about the fact that our teachers are here today. I think we've talked about leadership, leaders, we have all kinds of different types of leaders, including teacher leaders. One of the things we learned about a few years ago with my old friend Joe Patner from the state was that we needed to have distributed leadership. So the people with the titles absolutely have the responsibility and obligation to be leaders. But I think when I look behind me, I see every, every one of those people who you described as spark points are also leaders. So, and that leadership means that they're impacting the culture positively, they're expanding their teaching capacity and passing it on, and they're going out and learning new things in ways that we have never really done before. So I just want to sort of shout out to the fact that leadership in our building is about the leaders and the teachers. And that trickle-down theory is, we hope they don't leave. You're right. But I believe if we make this place as great as we want to, nobody's going to want to.
Thank you, Mr. Gillen. Again, I guess the word capacity is what's throwing a little confusion in my mind, so, uh, thank you for clearing that up. But I'm still a little confused, but I'm sure we'll get the answer.
I'm just gonna take one more crack at it. So our ILT is our instructional leadership team, and so that is a group of teachers with additional administration, and we meet once a month. And we are co-designing our school improvement efforts. So it's not just myself and Dr. Harrison deciding the moves that we're gonna make as a school. Teachers are co-designing those moves with us. And so, for example, the alumni summit, that has been something that we dreamed up back in November, and we went ahead and we disaster planned it. We talked about how we're gonna do this, and we worked backwards, and we said, okay, if we're gonna do this, what do we want the vision to look like? And teachers offered input, and teachers went ahead and designed questions, and teachers actually did the heavy lifting of executing on the day of the event. So we see teachers as really being an integral piece of making these transformative, transformative moves in our school. That is the only way we're gonna get true transformation at Taunton High, is to invest in teachers and give them the autonomy and empower them to go ahead and, like, really define what change looks like at Taunton High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, Mayor, I'm sorry, one more thing. It, it, I, I believe that, you know, when I met with Dr. Harrison when he first came on board, we did talk about the alumni factor, that it's so important to bring back these students to share their stories and their successes. So I, I, I appreciate Dr. Harrison and his team, uh, going along that, that vision that I shared with him also early on. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, before Superintendent Cabral wraps it up, I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Cabral and this amazing team that he has put together. You know, it's important for us and the community to hear about all the school improvement plans that you're putting in place and the meet-the-moment grant work that you're doing, along with early college. You, you know, the benefits are just immense and vast and hit, touch so many people. Um, so fantastic work, and we really appreciate your enthusiasm and pride. Superintendent?
I never got a round of applause before speaking, but thank you. So I do like to crunch numbers and I do like math. So when, uh, Mrs. Golda mentioned that we're one of fifty-nine high schools, there are three hundred and seventy-two high schools in Massachusetts. So that means we're in the top fifteen percent as far as having this, this wonderful opportunity for our kids. And, uh, I, I need to commend, uh, as much as I appreciate all the work that Dr. Harrison has done since joining us seven months ago, I really need to commend Carolyn Beno for her work because she's been there at the grassroots, leading this work.
Thank you.
And, um, in the, in the few, if we were in the business sector and private industry, you would describe leaders and organizations that really change or disrupt the status quo as disruptors. And I see the individuals here before me, I know I describe them as spark plugs, but they really are disruptors. They are disrupting what is, what traditional education looks like, they are disrupting what status quo looks like and really pushing and looking, looking to make impactful change. And just today, we had a very thoughtful conversation, a visioning conversation about a school without walls. What would that look like with early college, the robust chapter seventy-four programs we have that have built-in internships? Now, I really picture an opportunity for our kids where there's brick and mortar classes, but also opportunities for experiential learning as well as dual enrollment. And that's why I believe Taunton High School can really provide every student, no matter what walk of life or what pathway they want to pursue. If you're at Taunton High School, you can find something where, where, where you can fit in and where you can belong and be a contributing member in the Taunton Public, the city of Taunton and in Bristol County. And I love the fact that you were hearing all about this, but I think would be more important and more beneficial, and we've talked about this as part of our long-term visioning plan, would be to, to organize a school committee, local official, state official convening at Taunton High School, where we can meet with our kids, visit the programs, see the work in action, and really get understanding what it means to be an administrative leader, an instructional leader, and see our student leaders, you know, and what they've learned throughout this work. So I'm gonna put that challenge out there to you all, because I know you have a great way of delivering. And as someone who's a first-generation student, now I wish that these programs existed when I was in school, not only to benefit me, but also help my parents, to help learn, teach them how to advocate for their kids and how to navigate these channels. So I think the work that we're doing here in Taunton is visionary, but I really want to commend you for your outstanding efforts. You heard me say it Monday night, staff and students who are on vacation, staff who have to work the next day, taking the time out of their schedule to be there. Means a lot to the kiddos, and it's a great example of what it means to be a servant leader when you put the needs of the kids before your own personal needs. So I commend you all, and I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, and thank you all for being here this evening.
May I make a motion for two-minute recess?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted, two minutes. Okay, thank you. Next we are on F, Superintendent's report.
So some more excellent news and, uh, some more points of pride for Taunton Public Schools. So recently, I had the privilege of attending the Francis W. Gallishaw Memorial Award, which is provided to high school students, or the top achieving high school students, uh, who belong, for the, to the school systems, who belong as part of the South Coast Educational Collaborative, which I serve as a board member. So we are the only school system that makes up South Coast Educational Collaborative that has three high schools. We have Taunton High School, Taunton Alternative High School, and the Taunton Virtual High School. And we had three high school seniors who attend each school that will be receiving a one thousand dollar scholarship. So our very own Natalie Duncan, who, when Isaiah is not present, uh, serves as the high school representative, she was the recipient at Taunton High School. Uh, so Natalie is the top-ranked high school student in the class of five hundred and twenty-one at Taunton High School. Now, she has completed eleven advanced placement courses, she has earned AP Scholar with distinction honors, and is an active leader in several organizations, as everyone here, uh, knows very well. The second student who was recognized was from our Taunton Alternative High School, and that was Evelyn Miller. She is a top-ranked student in her class, she's maintaining a robust GPA of three-point-three-five while balancing work and school. So again, another testament to having programs like the Alternative High School that allows students to provide for themselves, provide for their families, while ear, earning a, uh, high-quality education. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that she was also a junior achievement team member and a peer tutor. And last but not least, are very proud, as the virtual high school, I believe, is celebrating their one-year anniversary. Uh, so Mary Wallace, who's a senior at Taunton Public Virtual Academy, has excelled in, in her self-directed learning environment and inspired by her passion for literature, and Mary is, has pursued advanced electives to refine her writing skill, has made meaningful contributions, and she was the recipient of this prestigious award on behalf of the Taunton Public Virtual Academy. So again, great, outstanding academic achievements by high school seniors in all three of our high schools. I'm also very proud, and I think I share with the school committee, that we had thirteen students, thirteen students score a perfect score on the June MCAS exams in our elementary, middle, and high school. So we had Zelda Farah, who, who had a perfect score in the ELA, uh, MCAS exam, who attends Chamberlain. Alexa Lander, also English Language Arts, she's a middle school student at Friedman. Caitlin Palado, uh, received a perfect score on the math MCAS exam, and she's also attends the Freeman Middle School. Janelle Sisson received a perfect MCAS score in ELA, and she attends the Freeman Middle School. Another elementary school student, Jacob Bowen, received a perfect score on the math MCAS exam, and he attends Gallagher Elementary School. Cameron Cotton also received a perfect score on the math MCAS exam, and they attend the Elizabeth Poll Elementary School. James Agneta received a perfect score on the math MCAS exam at Taunton High School. And Mayor Eminova, I cannot say enough about Mayor, who received two perfect scores, one in math and one in science on last June's MCAS exam. Also, Holly Brennan, ELA, perfect score, who attends Taunton High School. Uh, our very own William LaFabe, you may know his parents, who work at Taunton High School. Uh, their son, William, received a perfect score on the math portion of the MCAS exam. Dylan Maderis, who attends Taunton High School, received a perfect score on the math MCAS exam. Megan Sang attends Taunton High School, received a perfect score on the ELA, MCAS exam. And we also had a perfect score from a student who attends the Taunton Public Virtual Academy. Matthias Nigara received a perfect score. So again, three different programs, three different schools, and you're seeing students achieving at a very high level. A great reflection of Taunton Public Schools, but I also think it's an excellent reflection of the city of Taunton, so I'm very proud of our students. And last but not least, to someone who has run two half-marathons and thirty-six half-marathons, what this math teacher accomplishes is no easy feat. So I just wanted to share some great news, Lisa Dermody, who's a math teacher at Taunton High School. She was one of fifty teachers nationwide, one from each state, who received, um, a free entry into the New York City Marathon, which is twenty-six-point-two miles. So she ran the race with fifty-five thousand other runners, two million spectators. Again, just a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for her. And again, she's very, very fit, as you can see, longtime runner. Lisa's also, uh, been a cross-country runner, she's, she swims, and she's completed twenty-two half-marathons. So again, very, very, uh, great news, very successful, not only is she a great teacher, she's also someone that our kids can look, look up to as someone who exemplifies what it means to be well-rounded and, and fit. So that concludes my superintendent's report.
Motion to accept the report and be placed on file.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Um, thank you, Superintendent, that was a great report.
Well, a question, if I may go back to that issue, one quick question.
What's that?
Uh, the awards for these recipients, must they complete a part of the advanced education?
Which award, I'm sorry, Mr.?
I'm talking about the awards for the, let me see, the awards? Yeah, from the, uh, South Coastal Education Collaborative.
Yes.
So they must attend a semester before they receive? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm sorry, did we finish that motion? We did, yes. Okay. Uh, administrative business, next is the staffing report, which I believe is just informational.
Received and placed on file.
Second. Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted. And then the Taunton Public Schools staffing update, any comments on that or just informational as well?
Yeah, again, I'm very proud, and I want to commend the Human Resource Department and Director of Human Resources, Shannon Turner, as well as our principals. You'll see we have eight TEA positions that are vacant, and that means we have a staffing rate of ninety-seven percent. Uh, three of those staffing positions are district positions, and two are at the high school. We have seven schools that are fully staffed with educators in our classrooms.
Received and placed on file.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted. Uh, number three will be January twenty-second, and then there is a field trip request. Is that, um, for final approval, is that just initial?
That'll be initial approval.
So do we have any?
Motion to approve.
Second.
As, as stated.
Motion.
Cost, everything else is here. Uh, nurse, there's no nurse involved because of the, they're going out of the country, so.
Yeah, the only thing I just want to note, you'll notice the reason why we're coming now is because this trip is scheduled for February of twenty-six.
Yes.
So that'll mean that the, what, this is just preliminary approval, so they can start the fundraising and all the costs, and you will be seeing this again.
Okay.
Now, may I ask a question, the cost, is that a permanent, is that a fixed cost, like, say, forty-one-hundred, I believe?
I believe that is the cost that was negotiated between the school department and the vendors, I, so I don't anticipate that cost fluctuating.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, if there's?
On discussion, Mayor.
Dr. DeMello?
So I remind, uh, the committee that, uh, we always, uh, have to proceed with caution. I would like to amend this motion with a update, a, uh, six-month advance update, and then a ninety-day window update, uh, planning trips for twenty-twenty-six, uh, so, you know, our financial obligation to make sure our funds are corrected, or, 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 how should I say? Help me out, folks, uh, funds are. Yes.
We can't think, I can't, so.
If, if, if we could amend the motion for a six-month? Part of the, uh, up, a part of the prior to departure and a ninety-day prior to departure update.
Okay, so I believe the motion is to approve with a six-month review, well, a review six months before the trip, and then ninety days before the trip?
Yes, correct, thank you.
Okay, so, um, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted. All right, subcommittee reports, elementary school, subcommittee, Mr. Laura.
The elementary subcommittee meeting was held on Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, members present were myself, as chairman, and Ms. Melissa Santos, along with Superintendent Cabral, Mr. Barada, and Principal Annabella Jones. The meeting was called to order at four-forty-five PM. Principal Jones was recognized to make a presentation on the school improvement plan at the Elizabeth Poll Elementary School for twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six, highlighting these three areas of focus with a concentration of goals to be achieved with continued improvement among students and staff at the school. Uh, first of all, number one goal was the continuation of improving writing skills through the consistent use of DESI rubrics and the GEMPA standards. Educators will continue to participate in workshops for professional development, and they will also be in the classroom to examine and evaluate student work and performance, allowing educators to provide literacy interventions based on data collected from the rubric scoring. Chromebooks will also be distributed to strategically identified students in order to provide the continued literacy development outside of school hours. The instructional coach will document this activity in a role in agenda. Goal number two, to continue to develop and strengthen social and emotional learning by addressing the needs of the students, their families, and our educators. All educators will implement mine-up curriculum along with ancillary supports to address the needs of the students. Educators will also administer mental health screenings to tiers one, two, and three, needs that are matched with strategic supports. Schools will only utilize evidence-based social, emotional, behavioral health interventions and supports as identified by the district mental health team. As an annual ongoing task, educators will be provided with the necessary professional development and coaching to implement interventions with fidelity, along with providing our professionals with the appropriate supports for teaching, modeling, and integrating social, emotional learning. Goal number three, to continue to improve student attendance and reduce chronic absenteeism at the school. The school will implement a comprehensive attendance plan aimed at reducing absenteeism by ten percent and improving daily average attendance to ninety-five-point-five by the end of the school year. Actions will include items of individual, individual class and the grade level recognition. will include items of individual, individual class and the grade level recognition for attendance during monthly school-wide assembly and daily monitoring announcements. Classroom incentive program and grade level competition, that will also have mental health interventions, will be identified and provided from a culturally responsive lens. Utilize student support meetings to identify and monitor strategies identified through this process to be implemented in the classroom. Utilize reset room staff and resources to support that the students are exhibiting tiers two and three level of need. Create student support plans for students exhibiting tier two and three levels of need, and continue to communicate plans to families of students who ensure, to ensure partnership and collaboration between home and school. There's an ongoing process of communication with families, community liaisons, and truancy offices throughout the school year. The school attendance information will also be discussed with their monthly family newsletter. Principal Jones presented the E-Pole improvements plan in a very positive fashion with great enthusiasm, detailing the plan, utilizing a multitude of resources, including working closely with our central administration here in the building to ensure that her goals and objectives are fully implemented, and thus creating a learning environment which will offer great results to our students. The meeting ended at five fifteen P.M. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Is there a motion to accept the report?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Long-range planning Subcommittee, Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The long-range planning Subcommittee met on Friday, January third, twenty-twenty-five, at two-thirty at the Elizabeth Pole School. In attendance was myself, Dr. DeMello, Mr. Enos. From the school department was Superintendent John Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Brenda Moynihan, Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas. Also in attendance was Secretary Fagan. First item on the agenda was Taunton Public Schools' Board of Health Updates and Violations. Director of Facilities presented a report, the Board of Health violations from the fall of twenty-twenty-four. This was a follow-up from the committee's meeting on November twenty-fifth. The report was six pages and outlined all twenty-seven violations. All work has been completed as planned. Committee was provided with before and after photos from Mr. Freitas. Mr. Freitas also made the committee aware that the Board of Health will have its first routine quarterly inspection in twenty-twenty-five, sometime in March, and said inspection reports will be forthcoming. Motion was made by Dr. DeMello and seconded by Mr. Enos to receive the information and place on file. It was passed three to nothing. Second item discussed was Hopewell School Roof. Mr. Viera presented to the committee two documents he procured from the Old Colony Historic Society that referenced historical facts about the school. Thank you to Bronson, McQuaid, the curator, and Halpin in that process. Document one was a newsletter written by Charles Crowley dated May twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty. Document two was from the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System. Mr. Viera expressed to the committee the historical importance of the building, that it had an education, the Village of Wintonton, the city of Taunton. It was noted the building was placed on the National Register of Individual Properties as of July fifth, nineteen eighty-four, in the National Register MAR Mass Historical Properties on the same day. Mr. Viera asked that the documents presented be distributed to the entire school committee, and the documents also be passed along with the city council. With any other communication, the committee votes to send as it pertains to the school. The committee had a discussion acknowledging and recognizing that any further use other than a school use, any further restrictions of any sort are not in the purview of the school committee, and that the school committee does not have any authority to set restrictions. The authority lies with our colleagues in government, the city council. However, the committee still finds it important to share the committee's vision for the building going forward, as the committee feels it's a fiduciary obligation of the electorate. Dr. DeMello made a motion, seconded by Mr. Viera, to turn the school back over to the city, direct and instruct the superintendent to write a letter to the city council on behalf of the school committee, subject to the chairman's review, requesting the future use of the building be for senior housing, veteran housing, senior or veteran housing combination. The committee requests that the building keep its architectural history that aligns with the historic commission's covenant, and, you know, noted that, again, Hopewell School has significant historic value in education, the Village of Wintonton, the city of Taunton. So the motion passed three to nothing. The third item on the agenda was project updates, THS Commercial Kitchen. Final testing of the ancil system, which is the fire suppression for cook-in, took place on Monday, January sixth. Students will familiarize themselves with the complete commercial kitchen, hopefully this Friday, January tenth, and the estimated opening for the Tagadon Restaurant will be Wednesday, January twenty-second. That date is subject to change. As we all know, it happens with construction processes. They don't always happen on time, so God willing. The second item under project updates was the softball field. Construction's underway, progress is being made, concrete testing's being conducted, piping's been going on. As of right now, the anticipated completion date is March seventeenth. That date is also subject to change, based on what happens in the construction process. It was also noted that March seventeenth is the official start date of our spring athletic season, so keep our fingers crossed. Dr. DeMello made a motion, seconded by Mr. Enos, to receive items and place them on file. It passed three to nothing. The fourth item, Taunton Public Schools' capital improvement plan, long-range plan in status. Capital improvement plan is complete. The long-range plan is currently being updated. Both the CIP and the LRP will be presented at either the March fifth or the March nineteenth, school committee meeting. Dr. DeMello requested a spreadsheet of the two, Hamilton Street income and expenses occurred. Superintendent Cabral stated this is city paid all expenses through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and Taunton Public Schools will now be incurring all costs. Updated spreadsheet will be presented at an upcoming long-range plan and public property subcommittee meeting. Dr. DeMello made a motion, seconded by Mr. Enos, to receive and place on file, and the meeting adjourned at two fifty-six. That concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report and move forward with the recommendations of the subcommittee to the appropriate committees here.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Laura. Motion and second. And then we'll ask for a separate vote on Hopewell School, if the committee would like to vote on that tonight, to turn that over, because that's what I understand was, came out of your committee, Mr. Viera?
Yeah, and then I have these documents that I'd like to submit as part of the record also.
So why don't we, you know, take Mr. Laura's motion, and then if someone would like to make a motion after that regarding Hopewell School. So motion and second to accept the recommendations and refer as appropriate. Is there a second?
On discussion, Mayor, please.
On discussion. Dr. DeMello?
I believe the appropriate motion should be to receive and adopt the recommendations of the long-range planning and property subcommittee.
Okay, excellent. Is that your motion, Ms. Laura?
That was my intent, to accept the recommendations of the statement of the board, of the subcommittee, along with the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Again, Mayor, I think you need to add the adopt part into the, 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 the motion. I think that's critical. Adopt the recommendations of the long-range planning and school properties subcommittee.
That was my understanding, to adopt, to accept.
So the motion is to accept the report and adopt, adopt the recommendations of the long-range planning subcommittee?
That's what you said.
All right. So, and there was a second?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Just a second.
Okay. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Mr. Polowski?
So just to be clear, adopting the recommendation is what turns Hopewell School over to the city?
It is in the report, but I think it would be beneficial for the school committee to do a specific motion on that.
That was my understanding. Thank you.
You're welcome. So this motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you. And so is there a further motion? Mr. Enos?
Motion to turn Hopewell School back to the city of Taunton.
Second.
Okay.
On discussion, Mayor?
Motion and second. On discussion. Dr. DeMello?
I think, I think it was the wishes of the subcommittee to include a letter on behalf of the school committee, written by the superintendent, with an intent of the building also that Chairman Viera mentioned, with the integrity of the historical society's covenants that I think are critical. I think that should be part of the motion.
That's what I would say, part of the motion.
Okay, that was part of the report that was accepted. Mr. Enos's motion stands. Would you like to add that also to your motion?
Sure, to attach one of the documents that Mr. Viera got.
Okay, excellent. So.
And the letter from the superintendent?
Motion and second, Mr. Viera?
That we haven't seen yet. So I'd rather make that, I don't really want to include that in my motion if I haven't seen the letter. Like, it's not been written yet.
Yeah, the letter is subject to the chairman and the board.
Well, it shouldn't be just subject to the chairman. It should be, it should be written on behalf of us. We should all agree to it.
Hundred percent.
So if you'd like, we could do this motion without a letter. You could make an additional motion for a letter that is first reviewed by the.
I'm not going to make a motion for a letter that I have not seen.
Okay. So what, so my suggestion is we take your motion, and then if, if a member would like, they could make an additional motion to do a letter that gets reviewed by the members.
Once we see the letter.
Okay.
Would we need a roll call on that? On discussion, please.
We don't have to. We, we will do a roll call. Dr. DeMello?
Thank you. Subcommittees meet for a purpose. They're elected by our peers way back when we start the school committee election cycle. Subcommittees put a lot of work into these, into this, into their work, at least I know some subcommittees do, and I, I think it's critical with, with everything that's going on in the city. Four hours time zone difference, I was up till twelve-thirty in the morning last night, participating in the school committee, subcommittee meeting, as a matter of fact, that took place chaired by Council President Potier. And I think we, I think we need, as a school committee, to be partners, right? I mean, I think we want that, you know, our veterans, our seniors have a place to go, and I think, I think it's appropriate, since we're handing over a prime real estate property with the integrity of the Wintonton Village to house our seniors and our veterans. I think, I think it's an intent. We can't restrict it, we know that, but at least it's the intent, and it was voted unanimously by the subcommittee. So I think it's critical that it's part of this motion.
Okay, well.
Point of order.
Just, just a moment. All right, Ms. Laura?
Point of order. I believe the chairman of the subcommittee indicated that his intent, voted by the committee, that of the intent, as you read it, was that we would prefer to see housing for the elderly, and that was part of your presentation.
We should, we should.
Mr. Viera?
Present it together. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it, it, it's, it's one package. We're not just sending the building along, we're sending the building along with our vision. It's, it's a fiduciary obligation of the people. What we, we think it should be, yeah, we don't have the authority to do that. It's not in our purview. It's not in our scope of practice. That's fine, but the city council does it all the time when they, when they make recommendations. So it's a recommendation. It's, it's based on the fact that the building has a historical aspect in education, going from a village model of education to a neighborhood model, and it's a vital part, makeup of the, the Village of Wintonton, which the city's putting a lot of money into revitalizing and developing. So I know as one committee member, that's very important, and a very important part, a very important message for me to communicate and relay to the city council on behalf of the people that I'm elected to represent. So if we don't put them together, I'll be voting against it tonight.
I understand the intent, and I'm, I'm also supporting that, that it be, but we can't tell the, the other governing body what to do with the building. We, we would love to suggest this, as I would, you know, in preservation of the historical significance of that neighborhood, and how many people from that community attended the school, and got a lot out of it, and there's a lot of history there. So it is, I see the intent of the subcommittee, and I would support that as well. But cannot be a letter to follow up, or does it have to be prior to the voting that we're doing this evening?
You guys can do it however you want. I mean, you're voting to turn the school over. As has been said, it is not within your purview to, anything that happens to the school after you turn it over, and I'm, I'm not sure where any fiduciary responsibility would come in with regard to something that the administration and the city council will decide on. However, everybody's certainly free to have their opinion and give their suggestions. I, I don't think it should be a big issue. I mean, it could be two separate votes, it could be one vote. It's not a big deal.
Heads forth, Mayor. Heads forth. We could do a letter, if we all agree to it as a committee, to stipulate the, the need that it be, but it can be done at any time, with simply transferring the building back to the city, or to the.
The motion is split right now. There's, there's one motion, so.
Mayor.
So right now, there's one motion to turn it over.
There's only one motion.
Okay, and then authorize Superintendent Cabral to write a letter. So, yeah.
Green. Did you hear that one?
I'm so confused now.
So it's what your motion is. So it, it is Mr. Enos's motion to turn the school over, and then another motion to authorize Superintendent Cabral to write a letter.
Good.
So. Can we go forward?
May I, Mayor?
Sure.
If, if there's no harm in writing a letter that's, it's non-binding, what's the big deal to not include in the motion as we're releasing the school?
We are going to make a motion to that.
I guess there's, so, so Mike, oh, you're not done?
Excuse me, please.
Of course, Dr. DeMello.
Mayor, I have the floor. I'd really like to get my thought process in. It's four hours ahead over here. I'm really trying to struggle here, okay? I, I just want to make sure that we understand what the motion is. Again, if there's no harm, if it's non-binding, we just said it's non-binding, we don't have, we cannot restrict the use of that building, correct? So what is the harm of sending a letter that the subcommittee, once again, put a lot of work and effort to go into the historical society, to meet with the people that have, that know the content, some already deceased unfortunately, of the intent of that building? It was, if anybody doesn't recognize, that was one of the only building, the first building to have more than two stories as a school in the city of Taunton. So I, I think if there's no harm, it's just an intent. It's, it's, it's non-binding. So what's the big deal of including it as part of the motion, which was voted, once again, unanimously by the subcommittee?
Okay, and I think there, there is no harm either way. You know, your colleague has made a motion, some agree. I don't know if anyone else has any input. I will go over to Ms. Laura.
I press the motion.
A motion is going, I mean, a letter is going to be written one way or the other. So, but if, if you press the motion, you need a major, you need a second, and you need a majority vote, so.
I press the motion.
Second. All right. So the motion now is to press the motion, and that requires a roll call vote. So.
Me.
Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabbs?
Yes.
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Viera?
No.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
No.
No.
So, four, three, I believe the motion passes.
Yes. Yes, it does.
Okay. And, well, I'll vote yes, just to make sure. Okay. Okay. So now we're on the next motion, which is.
Is pressing the original.
Correct.
So, yeah, so now the, the standing motion is Mr. Enos's motion to turn over the school to the city, and we'll do that on a roll call vote as well.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabbs?
Yes.
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Viera?
No.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
No.
I'll vote yes. Okay, so five, three, that motion passes as well.
Motion to refer the matter to Superintendent Cabral to do a written letter stipulating our, our feelings, our requests, our, what is the word?
Was it suggestions?
Our suggestions to.
Second.
Motion and second on a roll call as well.
On discussion.
Oh, on discussion.
On discussion, please. We, we just witnessed less than twenty-four hours ago, a split city on a property, the nursing home, I guess it's three fifty Norton Avenue, okay? The decisiveness that's continuing on in this city, the intent of the school committee, or at least the subcommittee, I should say. or at least the Subcommittee, I should say, was to stop this nonsense, okay? To try to help the situation. And I can't believe that we meet as Subcommittees, we vote unanimously to bring something forward to the full committee, and yet it gets dissected, okay, and split in many ways, not only this time and other times too. So why do we need Subcommittee's? I ask that question to my colleagues. Why do we meet for Subcommittee's?
Okay, so there is a motion and a second?
Mayor, I have a question on the floor.
Well, nobody's answering it.
Why we as Subcommittee's?
Who's your question to?
To my colleagues. Anyone that wants to answer?
No one has to answer it. I don't know if anyone wants to answer it. If someone does, please feel free. If no one does, we will move on with the vote. Okay, seeing no one? On a roll call, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Ms. Terinus?
Yes.
Mrs. Shavz?
Yes.
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Viera?
No.
Mrs. Fagan, just to, so you're sure, this is to send the letter?
This is Greg's letter.
Have the superintendent prepare a letter.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry then, I apologize.
Mr. Viera?
No.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Yes, um, I'll vote yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Sorry.
Yes, to send a letter as formulated by the Subcommittee. Is that the motion that we're voting on here?
Yes.
Yes.
Have the superintendent prepare the...
The superintendent will prepare a letter.
And, and reviewed by the chair and the full committee, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Yes, okay, great. So my, my, my vote is yes.
Okay. And I am not voting on this?
No.
Oh, okay, Melissa's not here. Okay, so that, that one is, um...
Six, two, right? Does this one have six?
So this would be five, two.
This one, this last one was six, two.
Six, two, the last one.
So.
Well, you don't want to vote on...
I'm not voting on this.
So it'll be five, two.
Five, two.
Oh, that's right.
Right. That's good.
Yeah, right.
Alright, so next we go to Finance and Law. Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Fagan?
I'd like to answer Dr. DeMello's question.
Well, unfortunately, we passed that one, Mrs. Fagan.
Oh, are we?
I apologize. Yeah.
Can I bring it up on the new business?
So, um...
Absolutely, I'll bring it up on the new business, absolutely.
Okay. Um, we will go to Finance and Law? Yeah, so now we're doing Finance and Law?
Mr. Viera is chairman of Finance and Law tonight. We decided Mr. Viera is chairman tonight.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met on Wednesday, January 8, 5:45 PM at the Elizabeth Pole School, 215 Harris Street, Taunton, Mass. In attendance was myself, Mrs. Shavz, and Dr. DeMello for the administration, Superintendent Cabral, and Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. First item on the list was bills payable for FY '24 in the amount of $8,800. Dr. DeMello had a question as to why we are still paying bills from fiscal year 2024 this late. The, the question was answered by the administration. Motion was made and seconded to pay the bills. It was passed two to one with Dr. DeMello voting against it. Next item was FY '25 in the amount of $1,447,439.61. There were questions asked on page 10, page 14, 18, and 23, some questions about food services in the amount of $1,150. Superintendent answered the questions. Dr. DeMello wanted to be recorded as voting present on page seven, Coaching for Change, and on page 21, Pride Inc. Question arose on page seven, and Assistant Superintendent Moynihan let the Subcommittee know that all invoices going forward will require that they have services that were rendered along with them. The Subcommittee voted, subject to Dr. DeMello voting present, and it passed three to nothing. Second item on the agenda was ADA update. Installation of visual contrast stair treads on the auditorium stairs were installed. The visual contrast treads will be installed throughout the rest of the school during the upcoming vacation break, with the completion expected by April. So they hope to complete the work by April vacation. That motion was made to receive and place on file with all members voting in favor, and then we adjourned. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the report by Finance and Law recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second, are we missing?
From Ms. Laura's.
Okay. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed? So voted. Okay, there is no new business listed, and then we will go to unfinished business.
I have new business, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I have new business.
You have new business?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to refer to the school committee meeting of January 22 to disband all Subcommittee's that make up the school system in the City of Taunton, because I see no need for them, because the wishes of the Subcommittee's don't, don't go any further than the Subcommittee meeting that night. It gets dissected, disbanded. I have no idea why we even have Subcommittee's. So on the agenda for the 22nd, I'd like to put that motion to disband all Subcommittee's.
Okay, so you're referring that to the January 22nd agenda?
That's correct.
Okay. Unless there is a second, there will be a vote.
Do we need an official vote?
Yeah.
We need a vote?
Depending on the agenda, you do.
Sure, I'll second the motion.
Alright, motion and second. Does anybody want a roll call?
Sure.
Sure.
Oh?
On a roll call, please. Ms. Terinus?
Why we need a roll call? I'm sorry, why do we need a roll call?
Because I don't know if there's gonna be any no votes on this, and it'll be easier.
We don't need a roll call. We just take the vote.
Would, if somebody...
I don't mind doing a roll call.
I mean, I asked the question, and somebody said yes. So if you don't, if you don't want the roll call, but if, if a member asks for a, a roll call, we hate one, but if you don't...
Mayor, you suggested the roll call.
I did suggest a roll call. So, Mr. Terinus, are you okay with not doing a roll call? Would you like a roll call?
It doesn't make a difference to me. I didn't know it was gonna be such a...
Just, just to be clear, we're, we're voting to place this item on the agenda for discussion.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, no problem with that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.